Do you know what they want?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Spokane City Council's legislative agenda. I'll start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they shared this place and welcomed other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original people since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge that the strengths and the resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors and all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices towards Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all people. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Fister, call the roll.
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember McCart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present, sorry.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. So tonight, we are going to have a community presentation from the Grandview-Thorp Neighborhood Council. Come on down.
Thank you so much. Is this working? Yes. Okay. Thank you for having us here this evening. This was kind of our new thing after the town hall format changed, and so now we're the first neighborhood to do this, so hopefully we do it well. My name is Tina Lurison. I am the Community Assembly Rep. from the Grandview-Thorp Neighborhood Council.
And I'm Mary Beth McGinley, and I'm the Secretary for our council.
We wanted to shout out our Chair, Joy Sheek. She's been in the role for over 10 years. There were many times that it was just me and Joy sitting in a room, trying to figure out how to get people involved. We now have a full executive team for the first time in over a decade, and we're consistently seeing 15 to 25 residents at our neighborhood meetings in addition to city staff and presenters. We wanted to also mention Gabby in ONS has been just really great in supporting our neighborhood and as that liaison. And Councilmember Dillon, we appreciate your attendance at a lot of our meetings. Tonight, we wanted to just highlight our accomplishments that we've had in the neighborhood, follow up with some details from the wildfire evacuation drill that we had, and talk about some continued concerns from our neighborhood council. I pulled up the cover sheet from our neighborhood action plan that was put together 10 years ago. This was from 2015, adopted by city council, and I have our vision statement included at the top on there. It's interesting to see how, over the last 10 years, development and climate change have changed our priorities a bit, but we still, you know, we love our wooded neighborhood that is kind of secluded, but now it's kind of scary. So this here is a map of our neighborhood, for those who don't know. We are shown in white bordered to the north with I-90, and then West Hills neighborhood is north of us. To the east is 195, and then the Leita-Hangman neighborhood, and to the south and west are the county. I zoomed in on the northern edge of our neighborhood to show the density there. We have about 350 households, I think, up there, and just for comparison, that big spot underneath Thorpe Road there is where the Victory Heights is planned, and that's over 1,000 homes in that space. So just for comparison. Unique to Grandview-Thorp, we are 100% residential. We don't have any schools, community centers, churches, retail services. We have zero public transportation in our neighborhood. There are no STA bus stops, and we literally don't have a physical building in our neighborhood where we can meet for our neighborhood council meetings. So we travel outside of our neighborhood and meet in the Finch Arboretum, thank you, in West Hills neighborhood in the winter months, and then we meet in Grandview Park for the summer months. We wanted to talk about Neighborhood Cleanup Day. It's amazing. We love it. We have a ton of engagement from our neighborhood every year. We used to be able to have two neighborhood cleanups every year because we're small enough that we didn't exceed the funding with our one spring cleanup. Since they've opened up the disposal pass program and gotten more usage for that, we haven't been able to have a second cleanup, which is understandable, and we do really appreciate the disposal pass program as well. Many of our neighborhood neighbors we have recognized over the years through the Community Assembly Good Neighbor Awards. Our cleanup coordinator, Dan Stoick, is one of them. Him and his wife Renee, pictured here, literally live in the dumpsters for two hours on a Saturday morning every year, and they're amazing. We also have some other great residents that we've highlighted through those Good Neighbor Awards, Dave and Priscilla, who just pick up trash every day when they walk, and then we've got great advocates like Molly and Adam Marshall that really work to make things happen. Last year, for the first time, we hosted a Grandview-Thorp Neighborhood Block Party with some of our community engagement grant funds. We used a lot of the inventory from the Community Assembly closet with the tables and chairs and popcorn machine. It was a great event. We had over 75 neighbors that attended. We had a lot of really good connections. We're planning to repeat that this year. We're appreciative that the amount for food we can use from the community engagement grant has increased to $300, so we can get a little more food this year, and to use the new yard games that were just purchased with the Community Assembly inventory as well, to have a little more engagement. In past years, we used to host an outdoor movie night every summer. We've seen declining attendance from that the last few years, so we decided that wasn't the best use of our funds anymore. So we're moving towards the block party, and we're also updating our neighborhood signage this year with our new meeting times and an updated email account as well. Molly and Adam Marshall, as I mentioned, make things happen, and this was one of those things. The trolley trail here is Spokane Parks property, and the spot in blue dotted to the north up there was private property. It was secured through Conservation Futures Funds at the end of 2023, and now this year we have also received a grant from the Spokane Parks Foundation to do some safety improvements on the trolley trail so that you don't not watch where you're going and fall down a four-foot drop off an old bridge abutment. And we're looking for some sponsorship for additional historical information and plaques to post there as well. And I just wanted to point out while we're on this screen, if this works at all, not really, so if you look at West 21st, it shows that it extends all the way out to the west and goes to Grandview Ave. That is not accurate. There is not a road there currently. It dead-ends about in the middle of what that looks like, so there is no egress to the west for anybody who lives south of 17th. Also, if you look to the south where it's Scenic Boulevard, dead-ends, and there's just that one little plat in between that prevents a vehicle from exiting to the south. So keep this in mind when we talk a little later about our access issues, because you can't get out to the south or the west. From the neighborhood plan in 2015, bike and pedestrian access on 16th Avenue was a big priority, still is, but we were really not concerned about wildfire 10 years ago. It just wasn't on the radar. It wasn't as hot as it is now. We weren't seeing these big fires, but because of the increased homebuilding and wildfire risk, we're losing our homeowner's insurance in the neighborhood. Safety and preservation of life has become our primary concern in 2025. The Arboretum fire in 2023 resulted in Level 3 evacuation notices along Grandview on the northern edge of the ridge. First responders told those folks to evacuate to the south. Remember that picture? That's not a thing. They couldn't. So those egress routes to the west from 21st and the south from Scenic Boulevard were identified in our 2015 neighborhood plan that was adopted.
And that brings us to a real highlight that was actioned in our neighborhood this year. The evacuation that Tina referenced really resulted in chaos and fear in our neighborhood. So that mobilized our neighborhood council members to engage the Spokane City Emergency Management Director, Sarah Nass, and we're so grateful for her efforts and for the support that we got from our Councilman Dillon as well. After months of planning, we did the first-ever wildfire evacuation on May 3rd. We partnered with all these wonderful folks that are listed, the Fire Department, Police Department, the County Fire District 3. We partnered with City Communications, and what was really cool was, I think, the other councils from around the neighborhood, you know, adjoining council volunteers came, and all of them were on site that day to observe and give feedback, which was really essential. We had a key external partner with the County Emergency Management because they control all the alerts, and we also worked with the National Weather Service, and finally, we partnered with the American Red Cross. They had a pre-planned canvassing event to do fire home or home fire safety evaluations, and it dovetailed perfectly with our plans. So the first responders were not there to be tested that day. They were simply there as observers, but they gave a lot of validity, and their presence was very reassuring to the neighbors, and they supported us as observers and really had great feedback. I do want to note something that came out of this event, I think. The Spokane Fire Department chose our neighborhood, in large part because of this event, to conduct intense multi-day firewise training for their fire department, and I think that's a huge win. So the success of this drill, and this is for other neighborhoods that might want to do this in the city, we used extensive communication for education and awareness. So we did, you know, emails. We had door-to-door canvassing flyers. We had QR codes to sign up for Alert Spokane, and we positioned them around the neighborhoods. We had Facebook page. We did word of mouth, and then we used the City Communication Outreach, and we had media coverage, so it was really fantastic. So to simulate a real event, we originated, we had an actual event simulation originating from the southwest quadrant, and Alert Spokane messaging began around 9:00 in the morning, and by 9:30, everyone in the address area had received a Level 3 Go Now alert. And people went, as you can see. They came in droves. I was really proud of our neighbors to get up on a rainy Saturday morning and get in their cars and drive out of the neighborhood. As you can see, we had 237 vehicles exited during that evacuation. 206 of those vehicles came through a single intersection, 14th and Lynda Key, huge bottleneck and to a point, as you can imagine. We purposely did not create any obstacles to evacuation, but there would be in a real-life event, very likely, and what Tina described that happened with the Arboretum fire was exactly that and created the chaos. So this quote about that congestion comes directly from the after-action report, and it really talks about the congestion and the risks of that congestion. We wanted to illustrate that fire season and construction season are the same, and that, can you go back? Sorry. Sorry. And that, that construction, are you doing that? All right.
I have a cone on the mouth.
Sorry. Anyway, the construction that occurred there was on 16th Avenue. It's a major egress point for our neighborhood. It was closed for several weeks while they had to do construction. On the right-hand side, I just wanted, we wanted to illustrate the unique bridge situations that we have with railroad and Fish Lake Trail bridges. They're very low. Many fire evacuation, or fire emergency response vehicles cannot even get to us through those streets. They have to go in a very roundabout way. And then we have blockages from what I call the blockheads, who think that they can fit, and they really can't fit, and that happens on a regular basis. And this all brings us back to our 2015 neighborhood plan that was adopted by city council, simply because it underscores the continuing concerns that we have for matters of safety and our livelihood. But before we finish, the kudos to the Department of Emergencies Management for sponsoring the exercise. It proved to be extremely educational for not only the neighbors but for first responders as well as city leaders. But I have to acknowledge that among the most salient takeaways was the incredible community that it created within our neighborhood, and that would not have happened without the Neighborhood Council Foundation. It also instilled concrete actions for preparedness for a real-life event. So we want to finish by acknowledging that our system of neighborhood councils and the Community Assembly connecting to city council and to other city departments is really the essence of grassroots governance, and it's really phenomenal thing, I think, and we want to thank you for sponsoring things like our community engagement grants and for leadership training opportunities and so much more.
And I wanted to also recognize Council President Wilkerson for continuing that engagement between the city council and the Community Assembly and neighborhood councils, and for those of you that are participating on the Community Assembly Neighborhood Council Work Group, the CACC Work Group, sorry, just that continued engagement is really important and really impactful.
Keep up the good work.
Yeah. So thank you for your time, and we're happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions or comment from council? Councilmember Klitsky.
I just wanted one question. I hope it doesn't take too long. On the map for the trolley trail, what were the red areas?
So the red area in the center is an easement through a plot of land that is slated for development. There's been a few developers that have had plans and then backed out of it, but it is an easement, so it's not owned by Spokane Parks, but there is an easement provided there. And then again, same at the end that connects it to Milton. It's an easement.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dillon.
Just thank you, thank you both for all that you do for neighborhoods, and couldn't agree more with the latter point on this being, you know, really grassroots governance. It really, really is so, so important. So thank you all so much, and sad to hear about the movies. One of my favorite experiences up there was watching E.T. Under the Stars, and I'd never seen E.T. before, and that was such a lovely experience, but understand the challenges with that. But I'm sure you've heard the news about, you know, the DNR Thorpe property, and so just as I think there'll be some more kind of conversations about how to reconvene and bring stakeholders back together for what the future of that looks like, would love the Neighborhood Council's input on that as well.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Tina and Mary Beth, for coming down and sharing. Again, we have reconfigured how we do neighborhood councils' presentations. If you are interested in your council, Neighborhood Council coming before us, please contact Mr. Jacoby Bird. So thank you all. Yeah. All right. We are going to go into our consent agenda, and we have two people who wants to speak. Zach, are you online?
Zach, if you're online, if you could press star 3 to raise your hand.
You have two minutes.
Again, star 3 to raise your hand if you're online, Zach.
Another online is Betsy. Betsy, if you're online.
Betsy, if you're online, could you press star 3 to raise your hand? Again, Betsy, star 3 to raise your hand. Not seeing any.
All right. Seeing nothing. Any council commentary on the consent agenda? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Extensions? That passes 6-0. Thank you, Ms. Fister.
Special Budget Ordinance C-36713, Amending Ordinance Number C-36626, entitled in part, in ordinance adopting a biennial budget for the city of Spokane and amending it to accept community-based private-public partnership CBP III grant and declaring an emergency.
We have two public comments. Again, Zach, if you're online.
Zach, if you're online, if you could press star 3 to raise your hand, please.
Councilmember McCart.
Yeah, Council President, if it's the same that was signed up for the consent, if you read the sign-up, it appears that it may not be a true, real individual.
Well, we are honoring the First Amendment right to speak, so we were given the opportunity, but seeing that.
They raised their hand. Zach, if you could press star 6 to unmute yourself.
This is Dennis Flynn. I signed up for consent and the two things related to this. Is it okay if I speak? I don't know if you don't have me on the list for these.
Dennis, we do not have you on any sign-ups for consent or this item.
We have voted on the consent, Dennis, but if you want to speak on... 36713.
Which one are we on? 713?
Yes.
Okay, so today is July 4th. Hi, Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. I'm speaking on 13, and today is July 14th. It got up to 93 degrees today. Of course, it was 87 years ago and 38 when the record of 101 was hit, and in 93, we had the lowest high of 66, but the Wolf definition of climate change isn't really meant to do anything than to scare money out of our pockets. So we're going to spend $3 million of our tax dollars to put solar panels and batteries at the water department, assuming we've properly negotiated some reduced rate with the Vista at $0.05 per kilowatt hour. That's 60 million kilowatt hours that we'd have to produce before we'd even break even. And even if we're being ranked over the coals at $0.20 per kilowatt hour, that's still 15 million kilowatt hours to break even. So how many years is that for an ROI? Seven, 10, more? And do those ROI calculations include the increased insurance rates for the risk of lithium battery storage? Have we included future disposal and replacement costs of new battery storage or the lifespan of the solar panels? Not to mention the future landfill space they'll consume? And another thing, how could we possibly need electricity storage for this project? Just plow it back into the grid with a separate meter for a Vista to offset your consumption, because you will never produce more than you're using. Why would you take on the risk expense, maintenance, and replacement of battery storage that is 1,000% unnecessary? I mean, why does the state and other bureaucrats who don't care because it's our money you spend make incompetence so obvious to anyone paying attention? This is grandstanding, self-appointed pedestal, moral superiority. Really, is this really what the state is spending our carbon tax money on? I can just hear the council's testimony now. It will either be silence because there's only no excuse for the expense, but you're going to do it to us anyway, or you're going to say, well, the city's only spending $200,000 to get 2.8 million from the state, but where the heck do you think the state gets that 2.8 million from? Us.
And thank you, Dennis. Your time is up.
My last... Thank you.
Any council commentary on 36713? Seeing none, prepare to vote. That passes 6-0. Thank you.
Ordinance C-36717, amending ordinance number C-36626, entitled in part, in ordinance adopting a biennial budget for the city of Spokane and amending it to accept the Clean Energy Community Grant and declared an emergency.
Thank you. Zach, are you online?
Zach, if you're online, if you could press star 3 to raise your hand. Betsy, if you're online, if you could press star 3 to raise your hand, please.
Thank you. No public input? Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you. That passes 6-0.
Ordinance C-36710, amending ordinance number C-36626, entitled in part, in ordinance adopting a biennial budget... Oh, I'm sorry, that one was... Oh, no, it's not. Excuse me. Ordinance 36710, amending ordinance number C-36626, entitled in part, in ordinance adopting a biennial budget for the city of Spokane, and amending it to allocate another round of opioid settlement funding and declared an emergency.
We have one public comment. Bill?
Hi, my name is Bill. I live in Spokane, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Real quickly, this, accepting the money is a great idea, of course, but it's how it's spent. I'm hoping that as you're thinking about how to spend this kind of money, that it does not go toward low-barrier or no-barrier type housing, and to make sure that we're working toward helping people grow and get their lives back and compassionate, not housing and encouraging the use of drugs as we've done in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote.
Council President, I was just going to say, this is the opioid, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I was just going to thank council just for amending today to add clarity around where the expenditures were going to go. The version previous just said contractual services broadly, and so wanting to make sure that we had some specificity in the SPO, so just appreciate adding that clarity.
Thank you. Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm glad that was brought up. It was really important for council and the public to have that kind of itemized list. So this is funding that's going to go towards an outdoor navigation center, helping meet folks where they're at. Matty's Place, which is providing lifesaving critical care as well as a mobile unit. So this money really is going to save lives as we really continue to tackle our opioid crisis.
Thank you.
If I could just add...
Absolutely. Councilman McCart.
Just really quick, yeah, I just want to emphasize how important I think Matty's Place is and the funding. You know, as Councilmember Dillon just said, they do provide some really, really important services and lifesaving support for infants and babies, and it's just critical work that we got to keep funded. And so I may not agree with where and how we're spending the entirety of the dollars in this tranche of funding, but I do believe that that is important enough, and I will be voting yes.
Thank you. Councilmembers Oppone.
Yeah, I'm excited to be supporting this, and I just want to reiterate that this is another example, another part of Home Starts Here. It's about healthcare outreach and navigation, and so this is getting those dollars out the door and getting people housed and stable again, too.
Thank you. Well, I'll just say I support the whole thing but Matty's Place. We talk about going upstream. Infants is upstream. Prepare to vote. Thank you. That passes 6-0. Ms. Fister.
Resolution 2025-47 is deferred to July 21, 2025 agenda. Resolution 2025-50 approving settlement with Seraphima Steffi Kirkham, $300,000.
I have no public testimony on that. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you. That passes 6-0.
Resolution 2025-51 is deferred to July 21, 2025. Ordinance C-36708 relating to designated festival streets adopting a new section 12.08.060 to the Spokane municipal code.
There is no public comment. Any council commentary?
I don't think so.
I don't think... Rose, I just think you were moving seats.
What is it? 078? 708?
Yes. Yes.
I was, I signed up online.
It didn't come up. Come on down then, Rose, please.
Thank you. I'll be quick. Rose Noble, representing Visit Spokane. I also am a Spokane city resident. What you may or may not know is that we have a little bit of a difficult process to be able to close streets down and have festivals and events. So very grateful to work with Zepone and Adam McDaniel on helping get this ordinance to you. Thank you for considering. As you know, some of the largest festivals that do bring visitors in start with grassroots efforts. So being able to designate streets for us to help event coordinators promote and work with them in a sustainable way to grow is exactly what we're looking to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council commentary? Councilmembers Zepone?
Yeah, I'll just say that I'm also very excited to be supporting this and really want to thank the administration for working on this and prioritizing it. This ordinance does designate street festivals or streets to be festival streets, and we want people to know who are thinking out there that they want to have a festival close down a street. This is the administration committing to an easier process to do that, and that really brings people to our neighborhoods, to our community, and there are streets across the entire city that are designated festival streets. So really excited for this collaboration and really encourage folks to get out there. And this is about community. It's also about economic opportunity, too. That brings business to our community. So really excited about this.
Great. Any other council commentary? They call it festivals. I call it block parties. So it really is promoting neighborhood engagement to go out, you can walk out your front door and meet your neighbor across the street whom you may never have met before. This just gives more opportunity for engagement, and it builds stronger neighborhoods. So thank you for that. Prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you. That passes six, zero.
Ordinance C 36709, to ensure that housing development receiving public support is contributing to the availability of units providing long-term occupancy, modifying sections eight point fifteen point zero two zero and eight point fifteen point zero four zero of the Spokane municipal code.
I have no public testimony. Any council commentary on this one? Seeing none?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, so I went back and forth on this one. Originally, my understanding was that this was to align us with state law and state code, and I got information today that that's not accurate. And so this one's really tough because we're talking about, you know, tax exemptions for people building units for people to be able to live in, and I think that that's really important. I also know that limiting short-term rentals in them while it provides or presents a challenge for us logistically with our staff and the amount of time that we have with staff, and that's a burden for us. It also could result in a situation where projects no longer pencil because they don't have a better source of revenue attached with the more affordable housing component here. And so I wrestled with this one. I went back and forth on it quite a bit, and in the end, while I am a sponsor of this ordinance, I think I'm going to end up voting against it tonight, because if our goal is to get housing built, and I believe that it is all of our goal to get housing built, this is an example of something that we saw even earlier in the day where we saw some affordable homeownership opportunities, twelve, come through, and they were specifically able to be affordable homeownership opportunities because there were higher revenue generating units attached to them. And that's something that isn't lost on me, and for that reason, you know, I want, you know, to provide affordable housing, you have to have, you know, profitable housing as well. And so I think that this is a situation where, while well-intentioned, could result in the opposite of what we're wanting, which is more affordable housing units to be built here in the city of Spokane. So I appreciate all the work that happened on this, but in the end, I think I'm going to vote no on this one.
Councilman McCadhart, then Councilmember Klitschke.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, this is one I definitely have really strong concerns. Pretty much my entire time on council, there's been some level of effort to try to either regulate away short-term rentals, add fees or taxes to them, just try to make it less desirable, I guess, to develop short-term rentals. And I don't necessarily disagree. I don't have a love, per se, for short-term rentals, but to me, if allowing somebody to operate a short-term rental means that we are going to get housing that could be utilized for long-term renters, then that's something that we should consider. So throughout my time, usually this has been emphasized on ADUs, trying to limit the use of ADUs for this purpose. Well, if the only way an ADU can pencil is by allowing short-term rental for some period of time, then, you know, we're sort of cutting off our nose to spite our face because you're not going to get that long-term rental property because they'll never build it. They'll never build the ADU because it'll never pencil. And my concern with this is that we're going to do the exact same thing now with our MFTE. So MFTE is probably the best tool that we have to attract development in the city of Spokane. You know, we don't have really fast turnaround permit times. You know, we are not the best at all of these different things, but something that we do offer that is of significance is the MFTE program. Now, we heard today in committee this afternoon on some different related topics that it is very frequent that folks, to operate affordable housing, will need to have alternative revenue streams. And this is an alternative revenue stream that enables affordable housing to actually exist. And so we are thinking in the incredible short term at the cost of the long term. And my fear is that not only are we going to perhaps see a reduction in some of those developments that we want to see happening in the city, and the result being that they are going to go to other jurisdictions. I mean, these developers and contractors can relocate their projects. It's easy enough to go to North Idaho, the Valley, the county, and beyond, right? There's lots and lots of fertile opportunities out there. And if we're going to add burdens and barriers, then it's easy enough to just go around and go someplace else, which means we lose the housing. But we often still retain, you know, the folks utilizing our roads and the degradation and impacts that we experience because they're still coming here. They're just not living here paying the taxes that we all are. So I would rather us, and I tried to work with the planning department on a compromise that I thought, you know, we could find some way to carve out the short-term rentals so that they're not considered as part of the larger MFTE, which will still enable them to operate, generate those revenues, build the affordable housing, and manage the affordable housing, et cetera, et cetera. But the ultimately, kind of the feedback I got was that the priority here was to make it easier to administrate. And I just think that that's sort of a, it's, I understand. I want things to be easier as well and simpler to track, but I just, again, think that we are going to make things a little bit harder on ourselves by doing this. And if it just takes a couple extra little steps, but it means that we're going to get more housing, then that is what we should be doing. So I will be voting no on this. I would love to find, and again, I've said I'm very, very open to a compromise on this that would still allow for short-term rentals, but they would not be encapsulated within the tax benefits of the MFTE. Totally good with that, but just couldn't get to an agreement. So I'll be voting no on this today.
Councilman Klitschke?
I think this ordinance is a little misunderstood. My understanding of this is that we're trying to build some predictability into here so that the developer has to let us know how many multifamily tax exemptions they intend to put in a development, and then they do not count, or not multifamily tax exemption, I'm sorry, short-term rentals, so that they do not count towards the multifamily tax exemption. It does make calculating our taxes confusing if we have to do this after the fact when they're spontaneously added. So the whole point of this is to get some predictability. It's not to prevent a development from having short-term rentals, but they cannot. It's state law, and I don't think the taxpayers would support subsidizing the creation of new short-term rentals. If they're needed to pencil, that's one thing, but we need to know upfront so we know how to properly incentivize and properly tax the development. I am an owner of a short-term rental. I'm not, I don't have anything against them. I think, you know, there's pros and cons depending on the situation, but, and I'm sympathetic to the ADU argument, but we have been improving our permit times. We are doing what we can to incentivize development, but we need to make sure that we're meeting the goals that the community supports with doing this and not just subsidizing market-rate housing.
Thank you. Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, there is some confusion here because currently people can already have short-term rentals in their projects. This absolutely would eliminate their ability to have short-term rentals as a part of an MFTE project because currently what we can do is we can take a project like this and take it to the assessor. The assessor removes the amount of square footage that would be used for short-term rentals, and that is just some paperwork. And I'm not trying to minimize the work here. I don't know all the work that's involved, but that is extra work for our staff to make sure that that happens. And that is the reason why this is coming forward. It is to limit, my understanding is that it is, and I don't know if Spencer's here, but if Spencer is, I mean, he could come down and speak to her, somebody from the planning staff, but it is to eliminate their ability to do short-term rentals as a part of MFTE projects specifically because it's more work on our staff at this point.
Any other council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote.
No.
I didn't catch you. I didn't catch you, Councilman McCadhart. I'm clearing. We'll vote again.
No.
No. Well, hang on. Councilwoman Bingle, I got your note, but I'm clearing the board here. Councilmembers here, prepare to vote.
No.
Thank you. That passes four to two.
Ordinance C 36715 of the city of Spokane, establishing an honorary roadway naming program and enacting a new chapter 12.14 to Title 12 of the Spokane municipal code.
Any council commentary on this? Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, this was a really fun ordinance, and it really came from constituent feedback as well as an old mentor of mine at Eastern Washington University and some other cities where we'd seen policies that use honorary street names in a really impactful way, particularly Chicago. When you go to Chicago, you see the honorary street name listed above current streets as a way to celebrate a lot of changemakers. For those who've asked, electeds, there's an elected exemption in this, so no Wilkerson Way, as much as you like. And I won't do the full council like I did in committee, but get at me later and I can give you my street names. But it really is, the language in here is really neighborhood-centered. So the residents would be making a nomination, and it would go through a pretty, I think, robust process. And also really want to thank our legislative staff, Jenny, Shay, for all their work on this and research, and excited to see this move forward.
How about BW Court? Okay, sorry. Any other, Councilman McCadhart?
Yeah, this, I think this is a good thing, and I just want to say I appreciate Councilmember Dillon's kind of diligence on this, as well as Jenny, and Shay did do quite a bit of research, but a lot of this landed on Councilmember Dillon's desk, and so just really appreciate all of his efforts.
Thank you. Councilmembers Zepone?
Yeah, I was just wondering, Councilmember Dillon, does this mean that we have to go back and get rid of Zepone Place? That's named after my family. Okay, for you, then I can support it.
Seeing no other council commentary, please prepare to vote.
Aye.
Thank you. That passes six, zero.
Ordinance C 36701 relating to property maintenance and use standards enacted in Chapter 10.63, amending Section 16A.05.220 and repealing Chapter 10.64 and 10.66, Sections 10.72.070 and 17F.070.520 of the Spokane municipal code.
I have one public comment. Brad Barnett?
Good evening, council. It is a pleasure to speak to you this evening. Brad Barnett, Spokane, president of the Spokane Business Association. Our members, especially those in the commercial real estate and property management space, support the clear and consistent property maintenance standards. We understand it's important to hold all property owners to accountability, but as written, we think this ordinance does create costly mandates without adequate guardrails. We believe Section 10.63.08OC would allow code enforcement to require vacant property owners to install private security measures and cameras without any clear threshold. This isn't just codification. This is really an expansion of authority. The ordinance provides no objective standards to trigger such requirements, no evidence of trespass, vandalism, or chronic safety violations, just the language appears to be abandoned or declined. That opens the door for increased enforcement and unpredictable costs to responsible property owners, many of whom are already struggling because of the insufficient public enforcement on adjacent public property. We recognize the council's intent to consolidate these scattered property ordinances, but we do really ask you to look at Section 10.63.08OC to make sure that there's clear documented criteria before requiring additional security measures. That this would preserve the city's enforcement while allowing responsible property owners to continue to manage their property. The SBA also urges the council to ensure that all future regulatory changes, especially those that have real economic impact, are developed in close partnership with property owners and businesses who are going to bear the cost. Effective government does require collaboration, not just codification. More broadly, our concern is not just the cost of compliance, but the chilling signal that this sends to current and prospective investors in Spokane. If every vacant parcel becomes a potential liability, we risk driving away capital investment when our downtown corridor needs it the most. Our members believe in being part of the solution, but the solution must involve clarity, fairness, and accountability on both sides. Thank you so much.
Any council commentary? Councilmember McCadhart?
Yeah, thank you. I will not be supporting this tonight. I just don't believe that it's quite ready for us to be approving so far. And I think Brad just laid out a couple of the reasons why. There's just a number of items in here that have really not been vetted very well, I think, with property owners in the community to make sure that this is tenable, that we have a process that actually makes sense as to when these, as to what the thresholds would be, to when these different mandates would kick in. I'm probably as frustrated, if not a lot more so than most, when it comes to many of the private businesses in our community. But to me, the answer isn't mandatory security and things like that. It's, I do believe that there should be a duty to report. I believe that there should be a duty to clean up litter that is in their area, that is in violation of our code and that creates, you know, nuisance activities. But some of these others, I think, go pretty far, and I think we need a lot more input before we make these decisions. In particular, there is not thresholds identified in here, which means those will likely be developed in an administrative policy that we may never see. And so I think that those are the types of things that we really need to have a grasp on in the code so the public understands. I mean, there's a lot of buildings that could fall under this potentially now or in the future, and we want to make sure that this is very, very clear. The other issue that I've seen that's a little frustrating for me, because we do not do this, but we are going to mandate it upon everybody else, is requiring that the, any graffiti be painted over with an exterior grade paint that matches and/or coordinates with the color of the exterior of the structure. Drive by a lot of the graffiti cleanups, and I'm grateful that, for it, that we've done, but we don't always match the color and make it all, you know, nice like that. So if we're going to mandate something on the public, certainly it should also fall upon the city itself, and I don't see that happening right now. So I get very frustrated with that, and we've had a lot of pushback from some folks who've gotten concerns over the cost to do that and the turnaround that they have to do it in. There's just a lot of questions, and I think we could put a group together. We could work this out. We could get some better answers, make some changes, tweaks to this. There's no urgency. Much of this is in our code, so we can address this. But to me, there's an opportunity, I think, to get this right. So I just will not be supporting this, but there is a lot of positive things in here, but at the end of the day, it's gone a little far without the proper, I think, public process.
Thank you. Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, this is one, again, where I have my concerns. I think there's a lot in this that could be worked out, you know, if we had spent some time with. some time with, you know, our building owners and managers association, a lot of the business owners here who do own property, do own commercial buildings, because it's not like everything in this is bad, but there are ways that we require others to do things that we're not mandated to do ourself or that we don't do. And the thing is that we're not going to ticket ourselves, we're not going to ticket the city, but we absolutely will cite people in the private sphere. And this is something that I have, you know, a particular complaint with that we often do as a city, right? When drought measures happen, you can't water your lawn, but we're going to water our lawn, right? Because our property is more important than your property. And I think that just continues to send a bad message, you know, to the community that government is more important than they are, government property is more important than their property, and I have a big problem with that. And a lot of this is in existing code. You know, we are adding things today, though, which is, you know, something, again, that when we're doing these things, it would be helpful to get stakeholder engagement on issues where it's going to be affecting them, because maybe they have a perspective that we haven't thought of that's going to be really helpful. And, you know, one of the things I've heard from, you know, staff and from others is that, oh, this isn't, you know, anything that's going to affect the good property owners. This is for us to go against, you know, the bad property owners, except for, again, if you're going to have a law, you need to apply it consistently. You don't want to be picking and choosing where you're applying it. And so I don't think it's a good idea to have a law where you're picking and choosing where to enforce either. I mean, you should be applying evenly across the board. And so, for a lot of reasons, and this is, again, the frustrating piece was, is that, you know, a lot of our community partners wanted to come to the table so that they could discuss, because if it's as great as I'm being told our staff is, and we have a good staff, I'm not, I don't want to knock it as if it's not a good ordinance, but I think there's a lot that could have been done to bring the community on board. And it would have bought us a lot of really goodwill. It would have helped to build trust in an area where we haven't had a lot of trust. And I think it's just really a missed opportunity for really good governance, for us to bring community members into the fold. So for a lot of reasons, I'll be voting against it, but again, I just, more than anything, I think this ordinance is a missed opportunity for us to build trust in the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Dillon and Councilmember Klitschke.
Thanks. I think that, especially the graffiti abatement, I think that that's a little bit misunderstood. It says matches or coordinates. So basically use a neutral color that doesn't clash with the section of wall that you have graffiti on. And the city does do that. We just had a sidewalk graffiti abatement in my neighborhood that I just walked over, and it was varying shades of gray. It wasn't a perfect match, but it erased the offensive messages that were there underneath it. The two new things in this ordinance that this ordinance does change are actually pretty important in my neighborhood. It's the weed ordinance, which was very difficult to enforce before because we had to have a nexus with wildfire. And so if you had a pretty bad tall weed situation in your neighborhood and you called code enforcement and then it rained, when code enforcement showed up, they could no longer do anything about the weeds. And weeds can be a fire hazard, but they also hide things like rodents and can just be problematic in a lot of other ways. The other thing is it makes our derelict vehicle on property much more enforceable. We had a pretty high standard, had to be kind of a bombed-out, shelled-out car in order for code enforcement to do anything. So there have been a lot of folks dealing with very frustrating multiple-car properties that have not moved in ages, and this will allow code enforcement more flexibility to enforce those things. As far as the security and cameras situation, that was part of our SEPTED program, and it's been very useful in our neighborhood. We have a very difficult 7-Eleven that I'm sure some of you folks know about, that part of the problem was they'd have one employee in there and they had no windows, and the employees couldn't even see to report. There's a duty to report. None of this is new. The duty to report has always been there. The SEPTED has always been there. We're putting it in together at the same part of the code. So this is part of a process for very, very difficult properties. And so what our police officers did is ask them to install cameras so that the staff person could see if something was going on right outside the wall of their building, and that allows them to report. So we're talking about pretty serious situations, kind of neighborhood-killing situations, and our neighborhood really need these newer things, and then making it simpler and in one part of the code makes it more simple for everyone. So I will be supporting this.
Councilmember Dillon and then Councilmember Bingo.
Thank you. Yeah, the conversations around this ordinance started about a year ago, and it really did begin around, for me, a lot of the derelict abandoned vehicles that had accumulated on a couple of properties. There was some in District Two that had license plates that dated back to Watergate and when Richard Nixon was president, and they had been sitting there for decades. And we really didn't have a remedy to address that on private property. So that was part of the impetus behind this ordinance, and here we are a year later. So it was really residential. That kind of started out as the focus and what are a lot of our different standards around upkeep, as Councilmember Klitschke mentioned, too, the fire hazards with a lot of vegetation, vegetation that turns dry. So that was an important component of this. I want to thank Jason and Luis who are here. They've been very responsive to a lot of the concerns. I've met with various stakeholders as well to hear their feedback. You know, I do think a lot of those concerns can be addressed on the implementation side, and those conversations will be ongoing, and I think we can get there. So this is a good ordinance. I do think that certainly does level the playing field.
Councilmember Bingo.
Yeah, I'm not denying that portions of this ordinance are going to be very helpful, right? That's not what I'm saying. There was no emergency for us to get this going now, right? I tried to do a deferral today. You know, I asked for two months, but, you know, speaking with Luis and Jason as well, not but a few hours ago, saying, hey, it could be as little as two weeks. All I think that we should be doing is engaging with the community members where this is an opportunity for us to build some really goodwill, okay? It's not that necessarily there's anything terrible in the ordinance, although I outlined my objections to it. The bigger problem here is, again, just missing a very simple opportunity for us to go out to folks who have some really, like, legitimate concerns about this, and if it is everything I'm told it is, right? And again, Jason and Luis are great. I have no problems with this. But if it's everything that I'm told it is, why not wait a couple of weeks, bring the community into the fold, and instead of having somebody who's opposing us, and now somebody who, again, gets to say, we weren't talking to, we weren't talked to, our concerns weren't taken into account, whatever it is, instead of that, we could have had an opportunity where it was, you know what, hey, we had some reservations on this, they paused, they brought us into the fold, they heard us out, and now we're not opponents of it, we're proponents of it. That, to me, is, again, the bigger shame, something that, again, could have gone so much better for all of us. People would have not only felt heard, they would have been heard, and then, again, we would have felt some really goodwill in the community. And to me, that is a shame that we decided not to defer this today for that very reason, because, again, we could have gotten people on board with it, I think.
Thank you. Councilmember Zepone?
Yeah, I am going to be supporting this and was glad to work with Councilmember Dillon and code enforcement and administration on this. For me, that actually started about a year ago on the retail side of vacant retail properties that we see driving around town all the time, that are derelict buildings, that are nuisances in our neighborhoods, that are drags on economic development and other properties. These are these abandoned properties that are really overgrown, plywood, and making our neighborhoods look bad and inviting crime in our neighborhoods. And so I did outreach, actually, over a year ago on this with some property owners and went back to the drawing board and talked about it, and I think that this addressed some of their concerns, not all of it, but some of it. I think it's pretty simple. It's about making our neighborhoods safer, about making our neighborhoods better, and dealing with those vacant properties and nuisance properties, and that is what everyone in our community wants, and so I'm really excited to be supporting this.
Councilmember Kat Cart?
Yeah. I guess to find out that this has been worked on for a year and nobody could take the time to meet with the many business owners who are stunned to find this on our agenda is actually all the more concerning and frustrating to me. I had heard a little bit about junk vehicles, totally supportive of, from Councilmember Dillon back in December. Didn't realize that that was going to be a part of a larger package. I thought it was going to be on its own. And so there's a number of items in here that, again, I think we could support very easily today, that much of the junk vehicle stuff is ready to go, but the rest of it is not, well, not the rest of it, but especially the derelict property piece is not. And again, if this has been worked on for a year, a year, then I don't understand why we're getting a letter from BOMA just last week, why DSP is frantic, you know, in the last few, last week or so, trying to make sure that their thoughts are known. I just don't understand how we ignore that many stakeholders over the course of a year. I had no idea. I only heard about this ordinance a few weeks back, so I had no idea that this has been worked on for a year. I, I don't know. I'm just, to hear that, I'm actually just really astounded.
Thank you. Councilmember Klitschke?
I'll just say that, for my part, folks who contacted my office, whether responded to by staff or myself, and most of their concerns were about things that are already existing in code. Of course, we're always here as a legislative body. If folks have new ideas, that door is still open, but this wasn't done in the dark and it did not, we did not ignore community feedback, but a lot of that feedback was concerns about things that are already code, and staff did contact them and let them know if they're doing what they're doing now, then they're going to be fine. So sometimes the reality and the trust is going to have to come on the back end if folks don't believe staff when we respond and we say that's not how we're going to enforce it.
Councilmember Zepone, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I know. I met with building managers and addressed their concerns and took pictures of graffiti abatement and assured them that that did not violate the change. I know the administration met with Downtown Spokane Partnerships about this ordinance about two months ago, but I think at the end of the day, what we're hearing is fear from property managers who don't take care of their properties. If you're a property manager who takes care of your property, if you abate graffiti, if you take care of your land, it's going to be okay. Code enforcement has a process of education first, and that's the way code enforcement works across the city for all areas. They'll do outreach and ask you to fix the problem first, and if you don't, if you're refusing, that's when you can get a citation when things escalate. But for a property owner who takes care of their property, who addresses concerns, might not know about it, and is like, oh, there's graffiti over there I didn't know about, let me take care of it, nothing's going to change for you. We appreciate you being a good neighbor. This is for those buildings and properties that are nuisances, and frankly, I hear it from other businesses that those are the buildings that are problems for them, too. And so this is about addressing that and making our city safer and cleaner.
Great, thank you. Today, this afternoon, I voted for a deferral on this, and I had quite the conversation with code enforcement, and my question was, if this is deferred, what happens? He goes, council president, then we can't, we cannot start enforcing actions for cleanup and removal, and we've been waiting to have the tools to do that going forward. So with that being said, I will be supportive. I was kind of on the fence, but as I delve more into it, again, this is for, it was started in neighborhoods, and then it went to businesses, so I think there's great opportunity here, and code enforcement is not going to show up with the hammer going forward. So Councilmember Kat Cart, I think you already spoken twice.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What type of cleanup is, are they trying to get after? I don't know.
So they were speaking directly to the weed, the weed abatement that was growing. He also spoke to, on buildings where the windows had been broken out and they were boarded up. If they're boarded up for a short period of time that you intend on replacing the windows, that's fine, but we've seen broken windows where it's been boarded up for months and months and months. So how do we really help the neighborhood by having that building, property owner, do something about that? The other thing, he spoke to graffiti, because I say, well, how do you match the paint? I said, do you take it to Sherman Williams with the chip? Because that's what I do. They say, actually, Betsy, we have a contract with Sherman Williams, and we do do that. So they really have responded, and to the BOMA letter, I got the response that was sent to them from code enforcement, so I feel all their answers were, all their questions have been answered. I mean, will we be able to figure out every scenario of everything that might come up? We can't, because we don't have a crystal ball, but giving code enforcement the framework to enforce better, I think is in the best interest of our city. We've seen properties, like, coming down the vision. We know that big piece of property right there on Spokane Falls Boulevard, that's an eyesore. We've seen some over on Pacific and Brown, that's an eyesore. Those are gateways into the city, not owned by us, owned by private property owners. How do we get them to get in the game? We want homeless people removed. How come we don't have building owners clean up? So with that, prepare to vote. Thank you. Councilmember Bingo, no?
No.
So that's four to two. Thank you.
Council president?
Yes.
Would you share that response? I have not seen it.
Okay, so that response, so actually, if Luis is down here, he can come up, so I'm not misquoting the expert.
Point of clarification?
Yes.
I think Councilmember Kat Cart was asking to email it to him later, the response.
That response, which, clarify, Councilmember Kat Cart, what you asking for?
Yes, it was. That was my request, or my intention.
The response to the letter?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you. All right, Ms. Fister.
Ordinance 36702, simplifying the civil infraction system by creating a single infraction class, amending titles 1, 4, 8, 10, 12, 13, 15, 16A, 17C, 17D, and 18 of the Spokane municipal code, repealing Sections 1.05.150, 160, 170, 180, 190, 200, 210, and adopting new Section 1.05.151 of the Spokane municipal code.
There is no public comment on this. Any counsel commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you. That's six to zero.
First reading ordinances, ordinance C 36718, modifying the membership of the Climate Resilience and Sustainability Board to include a liaison designated by the Community Assembly and amending Sections 4.41.020 and 4.41.030 of the Spokane municipal code. Ordinance C 36720, updating the City of Spokane's Complete Streets Program, amending Sections 4.40.080, 17H.020.010, 030, 040, and 060, adopting new Sections 17H.020.15, 055, 070, and 080, and repealing Sections 17H.020.020 of the Spokane municipal code. Ordinance C 36721 is deferred to July 21, 2025 agenda. Ordinance C 36723 is deferred to July 21, 2025 agenda. Ordinance C 3672022 relating to impress funds, amending Sections 7.03.020, 040, repealing Sections 7.03.050, 060, 070, 075, 090, 095, 100, 110, 112, 120, 121, 122, 123, 150, 151, 152, 153, 154, 155, 162, 170, 171, 190, 200, and 230 of the Spokane municipal code. Ordinance C 36719 to adopt an overlay zone for property located at 2747 West Thorpe Road in the city and county of Spokane. State of Washington, by amending the official zoning map to show a planned unit development overlay zone for said property. Further actions deferred on the first reading ordinances.
Thank you. We have several public comments. First, Alex Hamasaki. Are you in the room? Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Alex Hamasaki, and I'm here on the behalf of the American Heart Association to advocate for stronger, complete streets policies that ensure that streets are accessible for all users of all abilities. When sidewalks are safe and accessible for everyone, people are more likely to walk, play, and connect with their neighbors. Staying active each day doesn't just feel good, it also helps lower the risk of obesity, heart disease, stroke, high blood pressure, diabetes, and even some types of cancers. We are excited to see Spokane taking the next step by updating its Complete Streets ordinance for the first time since 2011. Before the city moves forward with passing this ordinance as drafted, we ask that you consider additional language in four key areas. Number one, the ordinance should clearly state that during all maintenance, construction, and ongoing operations, that all sidewalks all maintenance, construction, and ongoing operations, that all sidewalks, crosswalks, bike lanes, and bike, bus stops must remain accessible, including planning for temporary access as appropriate. Number two, progress should additionally be measured by how well the public engagement process reaches all communities, especially those that are often left out. Number three, while broader plans may touch on public involvement, the ordinance itself should include specific language about who will be engaged, when, and how, especially during project selection, design, and implementation phases. Number four, lastly, language to ensure the prioritization of under-invested and underserved communities should be included throughout the entire ordinance. I'll be following up with an email with more details. We urge the city council to ensure that the updated ordinance incorporates national best practices and standards before it's finalized. Thank you for your leadership and for your continued commitment to building a healthier, safer Spokane for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eric Low, and after Eric, Sarah Rose.
Thank you. First, I would just like to state that I'm always so impressed by Ms. Fister reading the huge length of comments. It's just incredible. It's mesmerizing. Good evening. I want to express Spokane Reimagined's thanks to this council and to the city employees who have worked to update Spokane's Complete Streets ordinance. This is a much-needed update that greatly improves on the original ordinance, which was last updated fourteen years ago. That said, we do believe there are some areas where this ordinance could be improved. Specifically, we would like to see this ordinance prioritize under-invested and underserved communities within Spokane. Clear project selection criteria to promote transparency and build public trust. Develop a structured implementation plan to ensure consistent measurable progress over time. And most importantly, I want to ensure that this ordinance applies to all projects and phases, integrating Complete Streets principles into all stages of the transportation, of transportation projects, from planning and design to construction and maintenance. Spokane has an incredible planning department. Unfortunately, by the time construction commences, their vision is often co-opted by other departments to prioritize vehicle throughput at the expense of safety. To help address the problem of planning for cars rather than people, I've invited this council and Mayor Brown to participate in the National Week Without Driving. Taking place September twenty-ninth through October fifth, Week Without Driving attempts to educate policymakers on the challenges faced by the thirty percent of U.S. residents who do not drive. I sincerely hope that each of you takes the opportunity to see, even if for just a day, what life is like for those who do not drive. Spokane Reimagined would love to assist you in any way we can, and we hope that you join us in some of the events that we will conduct leading up to and during the Week Without Driving. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Sarah Rose, and then Rachel Schaefer. Sarah online?
I'm not seeing Sarah, but Sarah, if you are online, could you press star three to raise your hand? And Sarah, could you press star six to unmute yourself, please?
Hi there. This is Sarah Rose from Spokane. I just wanted to follow up with what Eric has said and the mentions about making this really focused on all steps of the process. Just the other day, I was going down West Garland, and I noticed signs on both sides of the street that said, please use other sidewalk, just pointing to each other, and therefore, both sidewalks were inaccessible. So I really want to make sure that we're focusing on all stages of the process, making sure that there is a safe place to walk or bike, even when the sidewalk is obstructed during construction. When we travel to other cities, we often see barricades put up if the sidewalk is under construction, and I would really like to see that here in Spokane as well. I'm excited for this to go through, but I think there's still more work that could be done. So thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Schaefer?
I have to bring it a lot farther down after Eric spoke. Hi, and good evening, members of the council. My name is Rachel Schaefer. I'm a statewide organizer for Cascade Bicycle Club. We're a statewide organization working to make biking joyful, safe, and accessible for everyone. And I'm also speaking on the Complete Streets policy updates. It's fitting that myself and members of other transportation organizations are here in Spokane this week for the Washington Traffic Safety Conference, recognizing that the strides that the city has made are ready to make biking, walking, and rolling more safe and convenient. That's why we're also pleased to see the city taking on the update of the Complete Streets policy, which is just another important tool in the toolbox to prioritize safety and give people more options for getting where they need to go. I get to ride all over the state as part of my job, and I've been lucky to do so here in Spokane with community members. And for every new project, like a protected bike lane or a trail gap that's been filled that I experienced, that's just amazing. I'm also finding myself on bike routes that just simply punt me out onto roads where there's no safe infrastructure, a lot of heavy traffic moving quickly, doesn't feel that safe. Or sometimes where I have to make a very large crossing, and I have to simply trust that the cars are going to see me and stop in time. So to echo what others have said, a strengthened Complete Streets policy is an opportunity for the city to bring the policy up to national practices and accomplish what Complete Streets are actually meant to do, such as prioritizing the disinvested areas of the city, being clear about how we're going to implement this, and holding the city accountable to its multimodal transportation plans. So thank you again for taking on this important work. I encourage you to ensure that this policy actually results in the transformational changes we need to see on our streets, and that makes Spokane, once again, one of the top cities in the state for safe streets. Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes testimony on first reading. Ms. Fister?
Excuse me, I signed up?
Oh.
Jeff Ketchel?
We have you on the next item. What is it here?
Right, I asked for this one. This is why I called you, Jeff.
Okay. Well, in that case, come on down, and we'll take your comments.
Appreciate it.
My name is Jeff Ketchel. I am a resident of Spokane and a volunteer with AARP Washington, the Association for the Advancement of Retired People, and I am a member of its executive council. On behalf of AARP and its thousands of members in the Spokane area, thank you for your leadership in updating Spokane's Complete Streets ordinance. We commend your commitment to building a safer, healthier, and more accessible transportation system, and one that reflects the values of sustainability and community well-being. AARP Washington supports passage of ordinance C three-six, seven, two-zero. Complete streets and the connections it provides is critical for older adults who are more likely to walk in their own neighborhoods, rely on public transportation, and face greater risks when infrastructure does not meet their needs. And as people age, their transportation needs evolve. Walking, transit, and other non-driving options become increasingly essential for maintaining health, independence, and social connection. And successful aging in place needs transportation options and connectivity. Thank you again for your important work in making the healthy choice the easy choice in Spokane, as this ordinance makes its way through the process and improvements are considered down the road, so to speak. AARP Washington is here to join with our neighbors for a healthier and safer Spokane for all. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you. Speaking now.
Jeff, I just want to confirm, are you also wanting to testify on hearing item one? Okay, thank you.
All right, there you go. Now, Ms. Fister.
S one, order of dismissal regarding Victory Heights' appeal on the record by citizen Stefan Harvey and Steve Barrett of the Hearing Examiner's May one, twenty twenty-five decision on Victory Heights Development, Z twenty-three dash zero four four P P U D. No public testimony is allowed on this item.
So on July second, council heard arguments on the motion of Victory Heights and the City of Spokane to dismiss the appeal. At the conclusion of argument, there was a motion to grant the dismissal, which motion passed. Council for the city has submitted a proposed order of dismissal. This proposed order is in the package. May I have a motion to approve the order or any debate?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the order. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? That passed. I'm sorry, did I get Councilmember Bingel?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's six, zero. Thank you.
Hearings H one, hearing to accept testimony from the public regarding candidates for the District Two, Position Two council vacancy. All candidate application materials can be found on the links provided. The recording of the public interviews of select candidates can also be found by the Vimeo link provided in the agenda.
Thank you. This is a time and place set for a public hearing to receive public testimony regarding candidates to fill District Two council position per Council Rule seven point one point E. The hearing is now called to order, and we will proceed with public testimony. Members are reminded, council rules and testimony still apply. Comments regarding candidates need to be respectful, civil, and germane to their qualifications to service council members. I'm asking you either speak in support or not support of the candidates. And first up is Susan Wilmot?
Thank you, council. Susan Wilmot, District Two, Long Term South Hill resident. And I want to thank you so much for allowing us to participate by watching the interviews. It was really important for us to have an opportunity to see the different people that were applying. I, I've been so heartbroken about the recent debacles that we've found about the encampment proceedings, et cetera. It's kind of torn us all apart, which is sad to see. And I see this kind of as an opportunity for some of us that had a little bit of a worry about the voice of the people. And of course, in District Two, we, there's not a lot of conservative representation. So sometimes we feel a little bit left out. But for this temporary position, I think, from listening to the various candidates, I was most impressed with Christina, and I'm not going to say her name correctly, but Sabatina?
Sabatina.
Sabatinas. I felt that she was someone that's seasoned, long-term Spokane, family mom, working mom. I saw her as representing me. I'm a grandma. I'm afraid to come downtown on my own. I'm worried about bringing my grandchildren down to our beautiful park and everything. And when she spoke about going to her neighborhood park and how the water fountain had been ripped out, et cetera, it just really kind of hit a beat with me that, that I would really like to see for that interim period, the four months that we have, if we could perhaps consider having her seated at the dais, it would make some of us feel like maybe we had a bigger voice with our city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Candy Galvin.
Good evening, council members. President Wilkerson, my name's Candy Galvin, and I'm a resident of the City of Spokane in District Two. I'm here to represent the unrepresented people who have no significant voice in the city council of Spokane. I am ordinary. I'm a mother, a grandmother, and a wife. I used to feel safe in Spokane. In fact, I felt protected in Spokane. I shopped downtown. I went to restaurants downtown. I went to events downtown. It no longer feels safe to come downtown at night, and sometimes even during the day. I wonder what has happened to my beautiful state and my once beautiful city. I wonder if I even belong here anymore. Part of every single day, I think about moving away. I don't want to, but I have no voice here anymore. If everyone belongs here, like we say, then my voice should be represented in this city too, or I don't belong here anymore. I want to remind council that there is also a huge population of county residents south of our District Two who too are ordinary people. They used to shop in our stores and eat in our restaurants and attend our events. Their money spends just like the residents of the city, and their voices should be considered as well. When I listened to the applicant interviews, thank you for that, I heard Christina Sabastinas speak from her heart. She sounded like me, an ordinary person. What she said resonated with me and the way I think. She would give a voice to all of us ordinary people who live in Spokane but have no significant voice. It is only for four months, I know, but please consider giving us a voice for these four short months and vote for Christina Sabastinas. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Those are all the comments. I'll request a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to close the hearing. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Did I get Councilmember Bingel's vote? Councilmember Bingel?
Aye.
Aye. I believe that is six, zero. Thank you. At this time, that completes our legislative agenda. We will now go into open forum. Remember, you have two minutes. Please address all your comments to the chair. Be respectful and germane to our business. And with that, we're going to start with Mickey Hatfield, Jessa Lewis, and then Will Healings. Yes, please come to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Jessa Lewis, and I just moved from Spokane to Cheneau. I'm a co-founder of an interfaith community that believes that the root of suffering and harm is disconnection from ourselves, one another, and the natural world. We work to restore those connections in part through the use of psilocybin-containing mushrooms and other antigens, also known as psychedelics. I've sat with people in deep pain, grieving, traumatized, addicted, and watched them find peace and purpose again. I've watched people prepare to die with dignity and without fear. I've seen lives, including my own, transformed through these experiences. Someone I love suffered for years with brain injuries. I was helping them apply for permanent disability. Through the careful and respectful use of these natural medicines, they came back to life after seven years of exhausting efforts of trying everything else. Today, they live a full and productive life. We collaborate with indigenous communities, researchers, universities, and NGOs. Because of the potential of these medicines and sacraments, it's too great to ignore. I was just in Denver, meeting with leaders for access for our first responders, and then this morning was in a call with international academics, working with veterans and sexual assault victims in active war zones. I'm here today to ask this council to join a growing movement to deprioritize enforcement against non-commercial cultivation, use, and sharing of antigens. Let Spokane join the one in seven Washingtonians who already live in places where these practices are decriminalized. I'm coming out of the garden to ask for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessa. Is Mickey Hatfield in the room? Will, did you see Mickey? Will Healings, and then Susan Wilmot?
Good evening. My name is Will Healings, and I live downtown Spokane. I've lived downtown Spokane for several, several years now. I witnessed a lot of change, some good, but unfortunately, much of it for the worse. That said, I want to take a moment today to highlight something positive, something to me that feels like a beginning of a real turning point. So the other day, I seen two Spokane police officers walking the beat. They're walking on foot, not on bicycles, not in their cars. They're walking on foot. And I think that's an excellent idea, especially for downtown. Because guess what? You guys know where I live. Once people see that, they clear it out. Now, it sucks, because once they leave, they show way back up. So I just want to say, just, I would hope to see that not just one day, but every day. And I know that their staffing, you know, affects that, but they need to work out something to where they can make that happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Will. Susan Wilmot, and then after Susan, Candy Galvin?
Susan Wilmot, District Two. I just wanted to mention that on the Fourth of July, when, and by the way, I accidentally picked this up, so I'm returning property here.
Thank you for returning it.
On the Fourth of July, when everyone was down in the park, we all got the news that there, of course, had been the unfortunate gunshot, which I thought was really interesting, because fireworks, who would tell the difference between a gunshot and fireworks?
because fireworks, who would tell the difference between a gunshot and fireworks? But I just want to say, it turned out okay. But that is one of those horrifying things for our families in Spokane on the Fourth of July. And so thank you to everyone who made sure that that was handled well, because that was a tough circumstance. So thank you.
Thank you. Candy?
Candy Galvin, City of Spokane. Good evening, again. I really only signed up because I wasn't sure which section to do, so. But I did want to, there is something I'm concerned about, and I just want to mention it, and probably not going to use the right terminology, but I believe there's going to be a levy proposal, some sort of property tax increase regarding our parks. And I know it's a big one, and I'm just kind of concerned because it, where I support our parks a great deal, but if we're going to allow public camping in our parks for any length of time at all, that's not going to fly with the people, and I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anwar Peace, and then Debbie Novak.
My name is Anwar Peace, a 25-year police accountability expert, as well as the City of Spokane Human Rights Commissioner. And on behalf of the Human Rights Commission, we would like to cordially welcome and invite the community and city council to our upcoming town hall that we're going to have on July 30th. It's going to be at the Central Library from 5:30 to 7:30. This is a courageous conversation series dealing with reimagining public safety in our community. This event is mainly about bridging the divide, understanding the human costs on both sides of the badge on use of force and use of force fatalities in our community. As some of you all might be aware, Spokane ranks the fourth deadliest police force in the nation, and some of the issues that are presented by that are regularly something that this council has to deal with. I know that in the upcoming agenda, there's going to be a settlement coming up for the Bradley family. These impacted families have been left out of the conversation dealing with public safety in our community. And so the Human Rights Commission believes that it's far too long for these voices not to be heard, and so we're hosting this town hall, courageous conversation on reimagining public safety in our community. Guest panelists are Chief Hall, the ombudsman, and some folks that are going to be testifying here tonight as well, with the Washington State Coalition for Police Accountability, which is an impacted family organization, as well as the Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission will also be on the panel. Strongly encourage you all to please attend. I sent you all an email about that last week. Thank you.
Thank you, Anwar. Debbie Novak, and then Diane Sutton.
Hello, Council President Wilkerson and council members. Debbie Novak, I live in the Nine Mile Falls area. I'm actually in Stevens County, so I come quite a ways to see you all and to speak to you. I am a member of the Washington Coalition for Police Accountability, and I'm also the outreach representative for the Washington Coalition for the eastern side of the state. So I do a lot of work with impacted families. I go to the Criminal Justice Center on a monthly basis, and I provide input for the certification program at the Criminal Justice Training Center. I've been doing this for over three years now. I am also working with the CJTC as a defensive tactic liaison, and I participate in many other ways to bring police reform to the forefront. Spokane does have a de-escalation problem. I believe we all know this. I also believe that our new police chief is making some good headway in this area, and specifically in regards to review boards. He's done some really good work with the review boards, which was much needed. And I saw, also seen, or I understand that there's going to be a settlement coming up pretty fairly soon for a family, but I just want to extend my hand and my heart out to that family, because I certainly understand what they're going through. A settlement is the only way for a family to receive any, really any type of semblance of justice once their loved one has been taken. Their loved one wasn't lost, their loved one was taken. So let's all keep pushing for the Office of Independent Investigations to start doing investigations in Region 1. This would be a huge cost-saving for Spokane, and it will also build trust between the City of Spokane and the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Diane, and then after Diane, Bill. And after Bill, Jim Leahy.
I'm here to address Spokane's high fentanyl death rate. But first, I'd like to look at the national landscape. On June 26, 2025, Representative Pramela Jayapal from Seattle introduced the Federal Housing Not Handcuffs Act. This act would stop federal agencies from arresting or ticketing unhoused people from sitting, sleeping, lying, or creating encampments in public areas on federal lands. Proponents hyperbolize that it would set a precedent away from punitive measures and toward housing-first style solutions. Now let's bring it in and look toward Portland. Portland's declining fentanyl death rate, 13.6 state drop in 2024, resulted from strong enforcement, passing of Oregon's drug recriminalizing HB 4002 and DEA seizures, reducing supply and public use, and enabling recovery services. Now let's bring it home to Spokane. Our rising deaths to 327 fentanyl deaths in 2024 and rising stem from reduced enforcement, high fentanyl supply, and a housing-first ethos in alignment with Pramela Jayapal's Federal Housing Not Handcuffs Act and Lisa Brown Spokane, Home Starts Here. Portland death rate down, Spokane death rate up. And I'd also, I just want to submit a document, it's first names only list of those who've lost loved ones in Washington State from fentanyl, and a brief statement from the National Organization Lost Voices of Fentanyl. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would leave it right there on that table, Ms. Schae will assist with that. Welcome, Bill. And after Bill, Jim Leahy. And after Jim, if she's in the house, Sunshine.
Thank you again, council, for letting me speak. I was listening to a council member mention to the group the other day that everybody in this room is working, trying to work toward the better of our community, and I think that's a wonderful thing. And I was thinking about it, the difference between the individual and the group. When you're talking about the city council, it's a group, but it seems to act different than each of the individuals sometimes. So I'm asking that we start thinking in terms of what the individuals want. With the fentanyl issues, the statistics of Spokane, we have a problem. We are a hub. We are known to be a great place to send fentanyl through from Vancouver, British Columbia. There are organizations in this town that we really don't want here. So we need to be working with all agencies in a cooperative way to try and help address the issue that we are as a hub. Also, I've always seen the idea of community-oriented policing. We need to work with police. We shouldn't be making the police a different, you know, the bad guy. The community-oriented policing ideas work, and they have worked in the past, and they're coming back again in the Seattle area and in the Portland area. So I'm encouraging you to start thinking more and more on how we can move that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, and then Sunshine.
Good evening, council members. My name's Jim Leahy. I'm the Executive Director for nonprofit Citizen 926. People have been coming to us, talking to us about a problem in the Spokane County Jail. People being held in the Spokane County Jail are protected by the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act, known as HIPAA. Medical staff are standing outside of cells loudly discussing the medical issues of the people residing in the cells, allowing everyone around to hear these personal details. I have also been informed that jail staff have been denying residents medical treatment. This is a human rights violation. Citizens have attempted to reach out to staff to advocate for their loved ones, but jail staff refuse to return their calls and emails. The City of Spokane contracts with the Spokane County Jail. Because of this contract, the City of Spokane will be held liable in the event a lawsuit is brought forth regarding HIPAA violations. I am calling for the City of Spokane to launch a formal investigation into the medical practices being conducted by the Spokane County Jail. Thank you.
Thank you. Sunshine?
I just want to say thank you to every, each, each one of you for the little deeds that you did in my life to help me. There's not a one of you that hasn't done something for me that I'm thankful for, and you're a huge part of my life. I don't know where I'd be without you guys. So people who have animals and are homeless come with a stigma, obviously, and my little emotional support dog passed away, age-appropriate, 17 years old. But a lot of people say, oh, if they're homeless, they should get rid of their animal. Or why would they get an animal while they're homeless? A lot of the people that have gotten emotional support animals while they are homeless, the reason they are not homeless anymore is because that support was there with them. There's so many stigmas that go with having an animal and homelessness, and there are lots of resources to help that, that we can help fund. Like, I donate to the Garland Pet Place up there because they help the Donna Hansen, who helps homeless people with their animals. That should always be our number one resource for people that are homeless if we're going to refer them somewhere, if you're worried about how they're taking care of their animals while they're homeless. Pets for Homeless is United States-wide, so it's national, and they are the ones that helped me because of my burdens to put my animal down and give her a proper burial, and now she's in a cute little pet cemetery. And I can't even say thank you enough to them. But, I mean, so there are a lot of support for people that have animals, and Donna Hansen works with a lot of these clinics and helps these guys. And I just, I just want to kind of break some of that stigma, because I don't know where I would have been without my little dog going into these camps and signing people up for housing.
Thank you, Sunshine.
Thank you.
And Sunshine, we are sorry for your loss. We are. All right. That concludes our legislative agenda for this evening. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Move the second to adjourn. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes, abstentions? We are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Not too far off, Jacoby.[1758.13]